We're gonna call public here in favor of 24th to order roll call please.
Councilman Johnny Blunt, Councilman Jason Hood.
Here.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beer.
Here.
Councilwoman Lamar Marshall.
Here.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Here.
I'm number one in public here.
Number one, an ordinance to adopt and establish a tax on the taxable property within the corporate limits of Hammond for the year 2018, Jenny Wilson.
Good afternoon, everybody. Here I am again to set and adopt millage rates for 2018. As I said before, nothing's changing from last year. It is not a reassessment year. It is not a roll forward year. And I'm asking to set exactly what we set last year. Do they have any questions?
Miss Jenny, I have a constituent who asked me if you could explain this in layman's terms, dollars more specifically.
Dollars?
Yeah, it's really not that easy.
Twenty-one point oh-four mils. Well, let's see. A mil... Okay. A mil, one mil equals one dollar for each $1,000 of taxable assessed value. Now, your assessed value is only 10% of your actual value. Now, that's kinda in layman's terms, but not super simple. You'd have to follow it.
Clear as mud.
Clear as mud, huh?
Clear as mud.
So, a dollar for each $1,000.
Of assessed value.
Of taxable assessed value.
And that's 10% of the actual value.
Right. So, let's say...
Two fifty.
Two fifty.
Twenty-five thousand.
But it's not really twenty-five thousand, it's two fifty.
Right.
So, one dollar for every thousand taxable, twenty-five...
That's what I'm saying.
Twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand.
So, the dollar's gonna be twenty-five thousand. Minus homesteads.
Not here.
Not here.
Not here. Only the parish.
Okay.
Law only requires parish, not city.
Any questions from the public? Any further council comments?
Put me to the test today, huh?
I'll make your money.
I know.
Not that you don't, I'm sorry. Alright, that concludes our public here. We're gonna go right into our regularly scheduled meeting. Roll call please.
Councilman Johnny Blunt, Councilman Jason Hood.
Here.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beer.
Here.
Councilwoman Lamar Marshall.
Here.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Here.
Councilwoman Beer, would you lead us in the front, please?
Oh heavenly Father, once again, we've gathered here to do this business of the City of Hammond. We pray, oh heavenly Father, that we be attentive, that we be fair, and that we do all that is in our power to improve the lives of each and every citizen here in the City of Hammond. We pray, oh heavenly Father, that we do all things that are pleasing in Thy sight, and that we turn to You for guidance in all things. These are all blessings we ask, in the name of Your precious Son Jesus. To God be the glory. Amen.
Councilman Hood, would you lead us in the place?
Sure.
I'd invite all active and retired military to render a proper salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Council reports. We're gonna have a GSI presentation by the Hammond High 4-H Club. You wanna give us your name and address for the record?
Yes, sir. I'm Vibriana Puri, Senior at Hammond High, and that is Maurice Watts and Ms. Haley Anthony. So, let's start. The 4-H Tech Club has been doing projects for the past two years. We started in 2017 with the kickoff at Hammond Recreational Center with the help of Mayor Pete and Ms. Lacy Rhett Landrum. Thank you, guys. And then, during November 2017, we came up with the project idea. Then during November, I mean, then during January 2018, we implemented the project and called it to action. Now, Maurice, our project lead.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Maurice Watts, and I'm the lead for this year's project. The 4-H Tech Club's service learning project, project's goal was to collect, analyze, and present data points on the visual condition of the ramps in downtown Hammond. This is to assure accessibility for disabled citizens, mothers with small children, and senior citizens. And now, turn the lead over to Vibriana Puri.
So, our main goal in simple words is to give accessibility to everyone, because Hammond is beautiful. So, let's look at what compliant ramps are supposed to look like. So, our compliant ramps are supposed to have, are supposed to have a running slope of 8.33 or less, and ramps should be at least 36 inches wide, or ramps should have transitions from the ramp to walkway, should be flush and in level. But all of those are what we saw were compliant. Now, as a project, while doing the project, we didn't have the time and resources to take all those measurements while doing so. So, what we did was, we took visual compliance. So, we saw whether they were visually compliant and they were accessible for citizens to use them. So, we saw whether they were visually compliant, visually non-compliant, or visually in need of repair. So, we saw a ramp and we judged them. Does this have large cracks or holes? Does this, are there any major obstructions? So, what did we define visually compliant as? Well, there was a good ramp, no major obstructions or cracks or holes. Then, we did visually non-compliant, which is, in other words, that there were no ramp present. And then, we did visually in need of repair. So, there were ramps with cracks and holes and obstructions in the pathway. Now, Haley Anthony.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Haley Anthony, and I'll be discussing with you the field day workflow. On February 22nd, a group of diverse students from grades ninth through 12th met at the downtown Hammond library. From there, Maurice gave a brief presentation, and we got introduced to the equipment we were using. We then got split into two teams, red and blue, and went to collect our data. Our parameters were from North Spruce to West Church and North Cypress to East Coleman. However, we got cut short by the weather and had to return back to the library. We then debriefed and talked about our findings.
One of the coolest things about our project is the equipment that we used. We used Tremble Receiver, and what it does, it collects a precision point data area, which is four inch horizontal and four inch vertical. So, these coordinates are super precise. And then, what we did is, we connected that to our phones. Our phones had an Arc Collector app, which is powered by Ezri. And what we did is, we went around downtown Hammond, just like that, a guy with a pole and then a guy with another cellphone in his hand. And we just went around and collecting all these data points. Then, what we did with our, the data we had in the Arc Collector, the smartphone, was that we transferred it to an online platform called Arc GIS Online. It's powered by Ezri as well. And what we did there was, we used it to upload the data and then better understand it by making it into maps.
As Viv just said, we used the maps to create the data up on the board, and we can, we can see we have two work groups, a red and a blue, and the data points on that work, on those work groups are three. Green for ramp to code, yellow for ramp not to code, and red for ramp in need of repair. Now, the first type of ramp we would like to talk about is visually compliant ramp. As we can see in the picture, it is flush with the ground, and there are visual stop indicators on some of the ramps. Now, good news is, 100 out of the 196 data points we collected were visually compliant. As you can see up on the board, most of the data points are centralized around the perimeter, and a lot of them are around four-way stops. Now, our next type of data point we would like to talk about is ramp curb in need of repair. As we can see in one of the pictures, there is a septic tank blocking one of them, a stop sign and lamp post blocking another. And in the third one, we see that there's a lot of dirt and debris, but what's important to note is that there is a big hole underneath that is dangerous for all, everyone. Now, 42 out of the 196 data points we collected were visually in need of repair. As we can see with the map, most of the data points are scattered about, but a lot of them are still around that four-way stop and centralized in the perimeter. Our final type of ramp we would like to talk about is non-compliant ramps. As we can see in the pictures, it's not there. Alright? Now, 54 out of the 196 data points we collected were visually non-compliant. As we can see here, most of the data points are collected around four-way stops, but what's important to note is that a lot of them are around four-way stops, and there are 10 clusters, all in all. Now, let's take a look at our data in another way. A total 51% of the ramps collected were visually compliant ramps. However, the other 49% were either non-compliant or in need of repair. This should alert the city council as to take a deeper look into the city's ramps. Now, I'll turn it over to Haley.
Now, let's talk about some questions that arose. Our first question is, who is responsible for the repairs on private property? This will be important to know, because the proper notifications need to be made if the owner's responsible. A fact that we learned is ADA compliance is dependent on the date of bill. We would love for you all to fix all ramp curbs, but we'd be grateful if you all fixed ramp curbs built after January 26, 1992. Which brings us to our second question. When was the last date of alteration for ramp curbs? We noticed some streets that needed repair by compliant ramp curbs, and it is imperative to note that our data did not evaluate these streets. Our last question would be, how often are ramp curbs evaluated, and which department is responsible for this? All of our questions and data lead up to our call to action. Based on our unofficial preliminary data, we would like to humbly request Mayor Pete and the city council to work hand in hand with the Hammond Streets Department to ensure that all ramp curbs meet the minimum require, requirement for ADA compliance. This will ensure that all of our disabled citizens, mothers of young children, and senior citizens have equal access to move around the beautiful downtown Hammond area unobstructed. Thank you.
Thank you, Haley. And I'll be concluding today's presentation with our next year's project. So, this year's project was on ADA compliance, and our next year's would be looking more into what health factors affect Hammond and its areas. So, we'll be looking at Tangipahoa Parish Health, a wider range. We'll be using countyhealthrankings.org as a platform through which we can compare and contrast the data that we collect in Hammond. Now, countyhealthrankings.org, you can find county-level data all over the United States. But what we will do is, we'll be looking at Tangipahoa, Tangipahoa's health data, compare it to Louisiana's health datas. And then, we wanna be the best parish in the state, of course. So, the four things that we'll have to remember are the health factors and health outcomes. So, health factors are broken down into four different components: fiscal environment, social and economic factors, clinical care, and health behaviors. All of those are factors that we can affect to get a better health outcomes. Of course, all of them can be broken down into subcategories, but all of them modify health outcomes. That's what we have to remember. What are health outcomes based on? They're based on the length of life and the quality of life. And so, our rank in Tangipahoa, our rank, our rank in the state of Louisiana is dependent upon our health outcomes. Therefore, what we will do as, as our goal for next year's 4-H Tech Club project would be pointing out health factors for you guys to implement policies and programs to affect the health factors through which we could get better health outcomes for our citizens. Thank you. If you have any questions, please contact Ms. Jessica Bean or Ms. Fran Harvey. And also, a special thanks to our sponsors. Thank you.
Thank y'all. That was, that was an awesome project, and I'm, I'm confident that Team Hammond will look into those, those needs right away, and we appreciate y'all bringing it to our attention.
And please give us a copy, so we can get all the points and addresses where it is.
Yes, sir.
Next, we have Shelley Hendricks, Merricki Autism Center.
We're gonna have these other two come up. Charity needs to lean on us, that's why.
Could y'all give your name and address for the record, please?
Sure. My name is Shelley Hendricks, and I live at 319 Wilton Drive in Baton Rouge, Louisiana.
My name is Charity Bankston. I live at 30424 Dawson Lane in Hammond, Louisiana.
My name is Tatiana Holiday. I live at 11550 South Fork Avenue in Baton Rouge, Louisiana.
So, we come to you today, we are a new education and autism center in the City of Hammond. Merricki is started in Louisiana in Baton Rouge. We've been open there a little over a year, and we just opened in Hammond at the beginning of April. We serve kids 21 with autism and other related abilities for speech, occupational, and ABA services. We also have a Be Me preschool that's an all-inclusive preschool for kids three to five, which will allow kids with disabilities and without disabilities to join together into learning that curriculum. I'm the Director of Operations over both the Baton Rouge Clinic and the Hammond Clinic, and I've brought with me my Site Director, Ms. Ty of the Hammond Clinic, and then our lovely Ms. Shelley Hendricks, who does our marketing for us.
So, we wanted to thank Councilman Marshall, who showed up pretty much the first day that we opened our doors, and he was like, "What is going on here?" And he got all excited and welcomed us to Hammond, and has been introducing us to people in the neighborhood, and we really appreciate it. We're very excited to be doing this. I have a 22-year-old son that has autism, and when he was first diagnosed 20 years ago, in two days from now, it'll be his 20th anniversary of being diagnosed with autism, and they told us he would never talk and he'd never be able to do anything again. And he is currently an Eagle Scout. He graduated with a regular high school diploma with a 3.2. He's got some money in the bank, because he's been working at McDonald's for the last six years, and he wants to be a baker, and he's looking for a redhead. So, if you guys know of any redheads, to Hammond, so hook a brother up. So, we want that, we want our children to be able to function at their best level of independence, and that's really important. And I don't know how much you know about autism. April is Autism Awareness Month. Autism impacts a minimum of one out of every 68 children in the United States today. And it's actually, they're getting ready to release some new numbers from the Centers for Disease Control, and those predictive numbers that have been talked about are more like 1 in 38, which is a significant number of children that are impaired versus 20 years ago, when they were telling us it was 1 in 10,000. So, it's gone from being very rare to being fairly common. But, it still costs a lot to take care of it. So, for every child that's diagnosed with autism, taxpayers wind up spending, wind up paying $3.2 million over the course of their lifetime. However, if they get access to appropriate treatment and care during their childhood years to help them get to a place where they can function better and more independently, that cost can be reduced anywhere between a million and a million point five per child. So, it's very important to have these services. Just from an economic standpoint, it's important, obviously, for the kids and their families. And then, it is also important from an economic perspective to have a clinic like Merricki in your city. A lot of the therapies are delivered in a one-on-one setting, which means that we'll be hiring a lot of people.
How many, how many people are you gonna be hiring, you think?
We think it'll probably, depending on, on how quickly the kids come in and how they max out in the clinic, and whether or not we're, you know, maxed out at the clinic and we're doing in-home services, it could be anywhere from 150 to 200 employees easily.
And that's just on the clinical side, the ABA for our children with autism?
Right. That's just on the clinical side. The, the other thing, and Ty's gonna go a little bit more in-depth on what the different programs are, but we're very excited about this. And as a young mother, who was a working mom, and had my child diagnosed with autism and could not stay at work because he kept getting kicked out of daycares because they don't like you to punch people and bite them in daycare, so they send you home. So, one of the things that's so awesome about this company is they've been innovative and have worked real hard to solve that problem for our families. A lot of times, families of children with autism, under the stress and the strain of the financial situation, and also just the stress and, and strain in the family, wind up getting divorced. And, and it makes it really hard to be able to support your family if you can't get appropriate care during the day. So, I'm really excited, and I think you guys will be too, and we hope to make it, you know, a really good community asset and work within the community.
So, sorry. With our Be Me Center too, we're also accepting childcare assistance, because we wanna be able to, one of the missions of Merricki is to put your heart and soul into everything that you do and to provide services for all kiddos despite their family's ability to pay. So, we are trying our hardest to catch the families that, that can't afford all of the services and offer ways to help with those decisions as well.
So, I'm just gonna talk a little bit about our services. I gave all of you in the front our flyer. That kind of explains our services. I'm just gonna go into a little bit of detail. So, ABA therapy, that is for our kiddos with autism. It is a behavioral therapy. It is, we use applied behavioral analysis, which is a type of psychological therapy, to help our kiddos, basically, like Shelley said, to be them, be their best self, some of their deficits that they have. We work with our BCBA's to just kind of promote those and get those, get whatever deficit that they have working. And Charity is a BCVA, and she can go into a little bit more detail later about exactly what ABA is. It's easier for a BCVA to explain it, because there's a lot of little nuances that they have, and I think that the therapy is just extremely amazing. It ages two to 20, and we have it here at our clinic, and we also have it at home base. So, if the child is not able to come to our clinic, or if it's just convenient for the family, we can, our techs will also go out to the home. We also have our specialized therapy, which is our speech and occupational therapy. We have a pediatric speech and occupational therapist onsite, and that this is for children of all abilities. So, if parents have another child that may need OT or speech, they can also bring that child in for services as well. And as they said, our Be Me Center is all-inclusive, and that is for, to teach tolerance for our children with disabilities and without disabilities. Our neurotypical children are kind of our leaders in our classroom. They are kind of the models to show our children with disabilities how something is supposed to work. This is how you put a Lego together. We want you to enunciate this word this way. It's kind of hard sometimes to teach a child with a disability exactly what you want if there's no model, especially if somebody not the same age as them. So, they're, they're kind of our leaders. So, that's our services, and as Charity said, our Be Me Center, we do try to take as many children as possible. We can hold up to 90 in our center.
Ninety-four.
Ninety-four.
And what were your hours, how many hours gonna be?
So, for our Be Me Center, which is our preschool, our hours are from 6:30 to 6:30. And for our ABA therapy and speech therapy, our hours are from 7:30 to 7:00.
And you're open on the weekends?
We're open on Saturdays.
And we're also open on Saturdays from 9 to 1.
Which is important, because moms need haircuts. So, their kids can get therapy while their moms go get haircuts, or just walk around in Walmart without.
Okay. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And we're having an open house tomorrow. Please come. Somebody wants to come by. We're cutting the ribbon. We're gonna open it at 12:30, and we'll be there until 4 o'clock, and we're gonna do the ribbon cutting around 1:30. So, y'all are all welcome, and we would love to have you come. Thank you.
Thank y'all. Welcome to Hammond.
Thank you.
Mayor, do you have a... As Lamar said, welcome to Hammond, Merricki. If anyone wants to know, it's on Club Deluxe to the west over the Interstate I-55, and it's right on across the street from Boat City, USA. And also, 4-H is heading out to thank them for giving us some more spots to work on. About 13 years ago, we started working on downtown Hammond and the ramps, and now we're constantly working on sidewalks, but it's always good to know where we need to focus our efforts later on, so thank them for what they've done. Also, Saturday, we had a good event over at Zemery Park. It's a 5K walk run. It was, we had our owner, Isaiah Douglas, better known as Zeke, who had received a heart transplant in 2013, who's doing very well. He works for the Parks Department. Also, local Toby Hinton, who received a liver. This was a day of recognition and a day of awareness for the legacy of donors, and also to provide hope for those who are waiting on donors. I will say that personally, my wife is a donor, and she's always tried to convince me to be a donor. And Saturday, it kind of pushed me over the edge, because you don't really realize how many people you can help. There was an 18-year-old young man who, my wife's friend, it was her son, who just passed away in the last two weeks. It wasn't but a few weeks prior to that, that he asked about being a donor, and what he needed to do to be a donor. That young man was able to contribute to 52 people and help them after he passed away. So, on that note, my wife's gonna be very happy when she comes in from out of town and know that I'm gonna sign up to be a donor. So, it's good, something to think about for everyone and to consider, but I know it's a very serious choice. Also, we have the B-17 bomber out at the airport, and I'll say, I was very surprised. It's been, there have been a lot of people. When it pulled in yesterday, they had a crowd there clapping and cheering for him. You can take a tour of the plane, you can take a ride in the plane. That plane's been in service for 70 years, started off in 1945. Over 20,000 young men died in this plane in bombing expeditions in World War II. 2,000 planes. These young men, 18 to 25 years old, and maybe the chief officer, when they took off, apparently what the gentleman was saying, they pretty much knew that that plane wasn't gonna land on the ground again. So, I think after 35 missions, you were done with flying, but many, many people died in that aircraft, and it's still around. It's a, it's a flying museum, so if you'd like to see it, it's out at the Hammond Airport, right off of Pride Drive. And also, tomorrow, we have the Cleanest City judging again. The state, we won district for the 12th year in a row, and we have the Louisiana Garden Club ladies come to judge tomorrow, so we'll be cleaning up. If you see any areas around town that look bad, give us a call, because they'll be here in the evening to do our judging, and hopefully we can win this thing again for the 12th year. Our team is out there working very hard, so if anyone can see something out there, let us know, if you don't wanna pick it up. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Do we have any new business and audience that we recognize? All hearing none. We have approval of minutes for April 10, 2019.
So moved.
Roll call please.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beer.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Resolutions, whole business none, new business? Number one, please.
Number one, a resolution authorizing the mayor to renew the insurance coverage for the City of Hammond for the period of May 1st, 2018 to April 30th, 2019. Don Steele.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Don Steele with Steele Insurance Services, 118 Southwest Railroad Avenue in Hammond. Before you, you have our proposal for our package for the 2018-19 year. As we have always done, we went out to bid. We enjoyed five years of having One Beacon Insurance Company carrying the, the package, and this year, we're moving it to Travelers Insurance Company. The pricing, as you'll see in, in the back, if you wanna turn to the back, the pricing with Travelers on the commercial package policy is significantly lower than what One Beacon came back with in their, their bid. And we also had a bid from Safety National Insurance Company, which was very good. It was 372,000 on the package portion. Most of the increase from One Beacon was driven by losses that we had and we sustained this year in some large reserves. Otherwise, you have the administration of claims by York. You have automobile coverage for the fire units. The fire units, we, we did have three losses in the last two years, as well as one new unit that we added, and that's driven the price up a little bit. Workers' comp is up for the first time in a while. That is the excess workers' comp coverage. That is the excess workers' comp coverage. Airport is basically similar to last year and all the prior years. They've really never increased on us. The property is up very minor amount. Our values are up 25 million. And everything else is basically the same as prior years, and then I'll entertain any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Steele, for the public? Counsel? Mr. Plut, your counsel?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number two, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mayor?
Thank you, David.
Number two, a resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into an open and end contract with Beverly Construction for limestone for the fiscal year 2018. 2019 price per ton, Janet Thurman.
Good afternoon. I'm gonna ask the council to amend the agenda to be Hampton Construction instead of Beverly Construction, and it'll change the prices.
Can you tell me again, Jen?
To be Hampton Construction.
Make a motion to amend the agenda to read Hampton Construction.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Motion approved to amend to Hampton Construction.
We put RFP out for limestone. It's open-end contract. We do go over the 30,000 threshold, so that's why we bring it for council to ask for approval. Todd Hampton overall is the lowest proposal, so we're asking for approval to enter into contract.
So, I'm just trying to look at this on the second page, the limestone, so under Hampton Construction, I'm looking at the different, like it says gray, Mexican gray. What is that?
The rock, the sizes?
Yeah, the 610.
The 610 is a smaller version of a...
I don't really know that. So, the different prices, so you're...
It's per ton. For the 610, you're gonna pay 39.50 per ton.
Okay.
And then the $34 is per ton for the Mexican.
So, the Hampton Construction cumulative was...
Overall is cheapest.
So, you're actually just changing it because of the, they have the price, the lower pricing? That's why I was hoping you were...
This would be paid out of the, I'm sorry, Mr. President. This would be paid out of the...
This is either a street department or water and sewer funds.
Any other questions? Any questions for the public?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Motion approved.
All right, number three, please.
Number three, a resolution to purchase two 2018 F-250 extended cab eight-inch service body trucks for the water and sewer department from Bealeford on state contract number 4400010204 for a total of $56,492.82. Janet Thurman.
These two trucks are gonna replace one truck that was already surplus, and one is on its way out. We're hoping that it'll actually last if these trucks come in. It is state contract as a local dealer, so we're just asking for council's approval to enter into contract.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beer.
Aye.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Number four, please.
Number four, a resolution to approve the Smoking Kitchen located at 2770 West Church Street, Suite Number Five, Hammond, Louisiana 70403, to sell high-low alcohol on premise. The owner is the Smoking Kitchen LLC, Jenny Wilson.
Good afternoon. This is a new ownership of a local restaurant that was at this location previously, and they have applied for a restaurant with serving alcohol and have met all the qualifications that we've asked them to meet. I do have the owner here this afternoon. If y'all have any questions for them, I'll call him up. Okay?
Good afternoon.
Can you say your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, Courtney Cryer. My address is 410-84 East Renee Drive, Puntletown, Louisiana.
Mr. Courtney, we ask everyone applying for an alcohol permit to come before the council.
Yes, sir.
And make sure we explain the rules concerning serving alcohol to minors. You know, you make sure you follow those laws, you've been explained, you understand those laws?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Pleasure, counsel.
Yeah, just your location, it's gonna be, what's the existing other, the older, what was the older place?
It was the old Cafe Rich.
Oh, okay, that's right. I was hoping. I was hoping, okay. All right, so when are you gonna open?
The goal is open for May 5th. Trying to bring back more jobs to Hammond. We changed the whole scenario that was there, trying to bring a local sports bar and give Hammond something positive to look forward to.
Okay. Is there barbecue, mister?
No, it's gonna help make sure of your seafood pastas and your seafood platters.
Because this gonna be, the food's gonna be smoking.
The food's gonna be smoking.
I got that. The food's gonna be smoking.
I set that up for him. Good luck to you.
Yeah.
What's the pleasure, counsel?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Good luck to you.
Thank you, good luck.
God bless.
All right, number five, please.
Number five, a resolution to ratify an award bid received on April 20th, 2018 for drainage improvements, FY 2018, project number 42011806, to the low bidder, Warner Trucking Inc., in the amount of $691,537.50. Webb Anderson.
Good evening. We took, as you can see on the bid summary, we received eight bids. Good bids and got a good price. It's within budget. We recommend the award.
Any questions?
I think we discussed the areas that it's in a couple months ago. Recommend the award to Warner Trucking in an amount of $691,537.50.
Any questions for the public? Any council questions?
Webb, do you have a timeframe on the pre-construction?
After tonight, I'll send contracts out and apply for it in about three weeks. So, work will be...
Before the pre-construction? Before the pre-construction meeting?
That's correct.
Okay.
I've gotta get contracts and bonds to them. They have to get all that process and sent back.
And do they, do they give you like a list of their priorities and where they're gonna start?
We'll ask for a schedule. We just can't...
So, you'll be able to tell us, like, once you get the schedule?
I should, I should. But after pre-construction, that's when they bring a schedule to us.
Make a motion.
I'll send y'all an email with that once we get it.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Webb.
Introduction of ordinance set public hearing, number one, please. I'm sorry, final adoption of ordinance.
Number one, an ordinance to adopt and establish a tax on a taxable property within the corporate limits of Hammond for the year 2018.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Any comments from the, from the public? Any public comments?
Any comments from the public? We're good at public hearing. No questions or comments?
Okay.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now, introduction of ordinance set public hearing, number one, please.
Number one, introduction of an ordinance to declare add surplus and authorize the sale of items listed below to sell on govdeals.com. Janet Thurman.
These items have been turned over to vehicles, have major mechanical issues, and the three other items are no longer needed for the departments. We're just asking for approval to surplus them and sell them on govdeals.
Motion to introduce.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Motion approved, public hearing set for May 8, 2018. Number two, introduction of an ordinance to approve and declare police confiscated bikes as surplus and to be donated to churches and other nonprofit organizations. There are 13 seized bikes.
These bikes were held for six months. Nobody come and cleaned them, so the police department has turned them over as surplus, and we will, with council's approval, donate these to nonprofit organizations.
Motion to introduce.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beer.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Motion approved, public hearing set for May 8, 2018.
Number three, please.
Number three, introduction of an ordinance declaring an emergency restraint share surplus property and providing for a donation to benefit public safety to the Tanshore Parish Sheriff Office.
This chair was bought in 2008. When they purchased this item, they did not know that they have to have a nurse on site 24/7, so this chair's never been used, and Tanshore Parish actually has a nurse on site, so they're asking to donate it to TPSO.
Motion to introduce.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beer.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Motion approved, public hearing set for May 8, 2018.
All right, number four, please.
Number four, introduction of an ordinance to approve budget change Form 18-09 Transfer $125,000 from Michael J. Kenny Center Recreation Cell Tax Fund 203 to Parking Improvements, FY 2018, project number 42011711, for a revised project budget of $200,000. Chuck Spank, Webb Anderson.
Y'all got lucky tonight. Y'all got lucky. This is, this fund is, was dedicated for the Kenny Center, but it has to be done by ordinance because it was not in the 420 fund. This is for additional parking at the Kenny Center, and we've probably added to the current job that has not bid out yet. We will be adding it to that job.
Needs it.
You say this is for extra parking at the Kenny Center?
Yes, ma'am. On the, between Washington and the Kenny Center where that grass area is, adding some additional paved parking there.
How many are you gonna add? You think?
Can I ask a question on that? So, if we purchased land for parking, have we, have we thought about that space as expandable space to, for the rec center in general? Have we ever wanted to add a third gym or onto that building, which, you know, there's been some conversation just talking about that. Mayor, we haven't, we haven't had a conversation, but just in general conversation, if you wanted to expand the building to accommodate more gymnasium space, why wouldn't we try to use the space we've already purchased for parking to do parking?
What space are you talking about? Space for the boxing program?
Well, no, initially, when we purchased that, was, we, we identified that as additional parking. When we initially, I'm sure if you go back and check the minutes, when we initially talked about that, it was more for additional parking. I just...
No, it was for, it was for a boxing program and parking for the program.
Well, I mean, I just, I just wanna...
We're still in phase one. Phase two is buying the other two houses on the corner for more parking.
Well, we could, you know, I'd just like to just, before we make that parking space, I'd just like for us to just, I'd like to just think about that space as expandable space for the gymnasium versus parking, especially when we already have other space that we could do parking on. I mean, I just, I just wanna think about that.
You say the grassy areas, is this between the United Way Building?
No, 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 right? When you're, if you're on Washington Street, you're turning on Washington Street, all that grass and space right there before you get to the gym.
You're in the kitchen at the gym.
On the side of the...
Mayor, it's in Washington.
Oh, okay.
I just brought it up, I mean, you know, I just think we could...
I mean, you can still expand the gym one day, you just lose the parking that you've built.
I lose the parking, you just have, you just, you know, sort of just thinking about. But then, we also have this space across the street that we, I thought, I'll go back and look at the minutes, because I think when we, when we agreed to purchase that property, it was, it was there, because I know the boxing hadn't come up yet. It was, we can, we can, we can go back and look at that.
Okay, I'm not, oh, we were just asked to design the part, we were just asked to...
We have enough time to talk about it.
We were just asked to do an estimate for that area.
Do we have a motion to introduce?
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Motion approved, public hearing set for May 8, 2018.
Motion to adjourn.
All papers.